New completion is 12 to 15 months.
Our model is simple but innovative in the sense that we're just bringing all the parts together. We're building with shipping containers. These are eight by 20 shipping containers. Three of those form a two-bedroom, one-bathroom unit. So when we're working on the site work and preparing the site to receive these modules, our modules are getting fabricated off-site at different facilities. And when they're ready, then we install on-site, and that drastically reduces our construction timeline.
We expect the project to be completed by the end of the year. This is intended to be permanent housing for formerly homeless families and individuals. And again, it'll have services provided by the people concerned to keep them housed healthy and safe.
Visit our websites, flyawayhomes.org and thepeopleconcerned.org.
Flyaway Homes and their partners have been able to reduce the total cost per client for housing in Los Angeles to about $109,000. We'll be sure to give you an update once this latest build is completed and ready for residents. We go from housing for the homeless to home sharing as a second income. Los Angeles has long suffered an affordable housing shortage, as well as rising rents that are outpacing incomes. But the Los Angeles City Planning Office is looking for solutions. Chief External Affairs Officer Yeh Kishigian zoomed into the Channel 35 studios to provide tips on the department's new internet portal.
Our department is one of the many that comprise the agencies that really support Angelenos and specifically providing a unique set of services. For us, we're largely responsible for maintaining our general plan, which is essentially a blueprint that prescribes policy goals and gives guidance on issues related to land use. The general plan is implemented through zoning regulations. Zoning being, of course, a tool that this department oversees and helps implement through our community plan updates to really help regulate and shape the face and look of development and the buildings and everything around them throughout our city. We oversee the drafting, a lot of land use policies. It can entail issues or policies that help streamline and bring more affordable housing units online. For a couple of years now, we've been working very closely with our elected officials and the various hosting platforms that engage in short-term rentals. So by that, I mean one that would protect and preserve our housing first and foremost, but at the same time, create a pathway for cash-strapped Angelenos to essentially be able to rent their primary residence. In terms of Airbnb and home sharing, it's more about just letting folks know that we understand the severity of the issue, both in terms of keeping and retaining our housing stock and have been quite effective in really reducing a lot of these illegal listings. You can visit us at planning, the number four, la.org. That's planningforla.org. We've attempted to really create a website that is a repository for a lot of our information, and especially for home sharing, where you can essentially not just click to obtain information about eligibility requirements and more information about the program as a whole, but also enroll online.
The L.A. Business Council honors Council President Nury Martinez. Charter Communication helps bridge the digital divide, and urban forestry webinars spring up in time for tree planting season. These stories up next on City Beat.
L.A. City Council President Nury Martinez was honored with the LABC Renewable Energy Leaders Award at the 14th Annual Sustainability Summit presented by the Los Angeles Business Council. The council brings together forward-thinking leaders to share ideas on conservation and energy renewal. Council President Martinez was honored for her leadership role in helping the environment.
Thank you to the Los Angeles Business Council for this wonderful award. It has been a pleasure to partner with LABC for many years, specifically in the northeast San Fernando Valley. I want to thank LABC for being a partner in this effort, and I also want to thank you once again for this incredible honor. Thank you very much.
Charter Communications has announced that they will extend their offer of free internet service for an extra 60 days for households with educators and students. This deal is for customers who live in a spectrum market and currently do not have the company's internet services. The internet service has speeds up to 200 megabits per second and is essential for today's students and teachers. Charter first offered its remote education program in mid-March in response to the technology divide brought into focus by the pandemic. To enroll, call 844-310-1198, and a free installation kit will also be provided. The city of Los Angeles has launched an urban forestry series, Growing Vibrant L.A. Communities. This series provides solutions and tools to help Angelenos in creating and maintaining green neighborhoods. The series helped kick off the fall tree planting season, one of many steps L.A. is taking in the effort to fight climate change. The series will soon be both in Spanish and English, and a new webinar series called Lunch and Learn with the City Forest Officer will soon be launched. Webinars will focus on educating people on a variety of forestry topics. The inaugural event was kicked off by Mayor Eric Garcetti, City Forest Officer Rachel Mallrich, and members of the Community Forestry Advisory Committee. For more information, visit streetsla.lacity.org/growing-vibrant-communities.
Los Angeles is in a time of activism, a time of social disruption. It is in times like these that we remember change starts at the grassroots level of the community. Parents of Watts is a nonprofit organization that has encouraged the children of its community to stay in school and avoid drugs since 1983. They were joined recently by Councilmember Herb Wesson for a candid discussion on how the digital divide is fueling the disenfranchisement for the children of Watts.
What we are here for today is we want to deal and work with our homeless children. This company is going to give them laptops, clothes, shoes, food if they need it.
These homeless kids, right now, are experiencing what we call academic injustice because they're not receiving these devices so they can participate in academic achievement.
We, as concerned members of the community, we, as stakeholders, have an obligation to our children.
Right.
To ensure that they get access to literacy and access to whatever other forms of, types of justice that's available to them.
What this is all about is everybody working together, lending resources, and getting the jobs done. Because our most important responsibility is to educate young people, and you cannot educate young people today if they do not have the electronic devices and Wi-Fi hookup that they need to learn.
Understand how they feel when they homeless, because I remember how I felt when I ran away from home and that made me homeless. I know how that was, but it don't mean they bad.
What you have to do in order to identify the proper kids is you have to program with the organizations.
Yes.
That are on the ground, that are on the front lines.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
And that's what we're doing more of now.
We want to deal and work with our homeless children, all the children. When we even get to them, you ain't going to be but one, no way.
It seems as though Councilwoman Monica Rodriguez is on a mission. She has elevated the practice of community giving to almost an art form. This past Saturday, she hung outside her district office distributing hygiene and household cleaning supplies because a little help goes a long way in supporting families that are strapped for cash. Check this out.
So today, Hispanic Star L.A. is here under the program of Fair Shot to give residents different types of products, everything from shampoos to fabric softener to just everyday household goods that you would need to help with the bills, so that instead of buying fabric softener, you can now help with the rent, which is very crucial during this time that we're all feeling the effects of COVID.
We know that the Latino community has been hardest hit by COVID-19. Pacoima, Silmar, all of the communities that I represent are an example of that, and so they have come together to help provide the resources that they need in our community, and so we're giving this giveaway today. There's going to be distributions that occur throughout the city of Los Angeles inspired by Latino Heritage Month, but it starts here in Pacoima, and I'm proud to say that in the city of Los Angeles, we're the heart of the city here in Pacoima, and this is where it's starting.
Hispanic Star was created with the purpose of helping the community, especially those most affected by COVID. So we have a commitment in different communities, in this case, L.A., to help our communities and our neighbors and our friends in every way possible with the help of partner brands.
It's important right now to donate to families that have lost their jobs, that don't have an income. These supplies that are, you know, provided to help these people in their everyday hygiene is just something that's really important. Right now, the time is more important than ever to be able to just give back to our community because they simply, they don't have means to be able to get it on their own.
So we want to encourage you that if you need the resources and you need the help, come on out and get it. That's what we're here for. They're always welcome to call my office and reach out because we're helping to help facilitate getting them connected to the right resources that they need.
You can learn more about Hispanic Star by going to hispanicstar.org, and they have different hubs, different cities where we're activating. So we would love to people to join, to donate, and just follow us in this wonderful mission that we have to help our Latino communities.
Councilwoman Rodriguez wasn't the only one handing out hygiene supplies this week. We were on hand in Watts where Altmed marked its own celebration of National Pace Month. All-inclusive care for seniors was the theme of the day for this South L.A. event.
We're providing hygiene kits to over 200 seniors that live in our South Los Angeles community. We have hand sanitizers, toilet paper, mouthwash, and hand hygiene. This program here serves the senior population that are 55 and older, that are medically needy.
Today, we are opening it up to community members who could benefit from the services that Altmed Pace provides. So we've invited over 150 community members here in South L.A. to come by, see what services we offer, see if it's something that they could potentially benefit with, especially with coronavirus going on right now. Patients need services more than ever before, and so we want to make sure that we're communicating to all of our community members that these services are here, they are in the community, and they are available to them.
Altmed offers a daycare service along with social activities.
Altmed Pace is here for anyone 55 and up. It's an all-inclusive program, so we look at a participant from a holistic perspective, not just from their medical needs, also from housing needs, food needs, social needs, anything that's going on, please reach out to us. We are here. Everyone has a family member, a friend, or relative that could benefit from a program like Altmed Pace.
To live in Los Angeles means that you live with traffic. As a matter of fact, in 1929, the intersection of Wilshire and Western was claimed as the most busiest intersection in the world. Well, how much has changed, actually a lot? And I'm delighted to have someone here who can tell us all about it, the General Manager of LADOT, Salida Reynolds. So nice to have you here.
Thank you. So nice to be here.
You know, this is literally the second-largest municipal transportation agency in the country, and the scope seems immense.
In L.A., what that looks like is we manage and operate those 7,500 miles of streets, those 5,000 intersections. We also have a responsibility for parking, so we have 37,000 on- and off-street parking spaces and meters that we manage throughout the city. And then we also have LADOT Transit, which we're very proud of. We're the largest municipal transit operator in the county. In a normal year, we move about 20 million trips. And then we also have a responsibility for regulating taxis, scooters, and electric bikes. So we have a really large portfolio of responsibilities.
Who would have thought talking traffic could be so much fun? All right, so let's move forward a little bit because I know one of the things that you brought to the table when you came is the ability to get around the city in new and innovative ways.
Right.
Scooters and bikes and electric car sharing and everything. How are those programs going?
So far, it has been a big learning opportunity for us. You know, some of the things that government can do well, you know, manage a huge network of streets at scale and build out these programs that build out big infrastructure projects that take many, many years, that's what we're good at. We can kind of play the long game, and we can have policy goals that are about, you know, climate, or public health, or economic revitalization. The private sector is really good at being very nimble, being very quick, learning fast, and, you know, coming up with new ideas and experimenting in a way that we can't always do in government. And so having those, if you have those two things working together, you can really open up a lot of great opportunities.
And if somebody wants to follow up and wants to actually see what's going on across L.A., what's the website they can go to?
Awesome.
Check out the Canoga Park Youth Arts Center online. Go to the Sadio's Drive-In Movie and support a great cause, or get your culture fix with Japan House L.A. from home. All this and more up next on Virtual Things to Do.
Online Zoom classes are back. Canoga Park Youth Arts Center has resumed its online music classes beginning October 6th. Join their virtual music classroom at home and learn a new instrument or continue building your skills. Classes include instruction for guitar, drums, piano, ukulele, and more. Class levels range from beginner to intermediate and are designed for participants as young as seven years old. Brush up on your musical skills with the Canoga Park Youth Arts Center online music classes, happening Tuesdays through Friday, October through December in 2020. To register or for more information, send emails to kaitlyn.moss@gmail.com. Join Team Sadio for Sadio's Drive-In Movies. Team Sadio from Council District One will be presenting Frozen 2 to attendees Friday, October 2nd, beginning at 6:30 p.m. Available concessions will include Home State's gourmet nachos, Foliero's famous pizza, popcorn, soda, and more. All proceeds will go towards supporting Academia Advance Grab and Go program and Friends of Mount Washington's Community for Anti-Racism Education. Enjoy a night out at the movies with the whole family for a great cause. Don't miss the Sadio's Drive-In Movies presentation of Frozen 2. Vehicle capacity is limited, so act now. For more details, call 213-440-7038. Japan House Los Angeles is a Japanese cultural destination in the heart of Hollywood. This amazing physical and digital destination continues to expand its offerings through a new curated series of online articles and programming, allowing fans worldwide to experience the complexity and beauty of Japanese culture from the comfort of their own homes. The articles delve into diverse topics of Japanese culture, ranging from art to philosophy to food. A new story will be shared each month with the latest dedicated to sensory Japan, exploring Japan through the five senses. For an exciting taste of content exploring diverse Japanese culture themes, visit japanhousela.com. And that's a look at some virtual things to do.
That's it for this edition. I'm Saieda Pagan. From all of us here at L.A. This Week, thanks for joining us. A reminder that you can catch us online at lacityview.org. We're also on Facebook, Twitter, and YouTube. See you next time for more L.A. This Week.
The 2020 census is coming. L.A. wants you to be informed, be involved, and be counted. Visit census.lacity.org for more information.
Giving your child a strong start begins the moment they're born.
Talk with them.
Read with them.
Sing and count with them.
Talking, reading, singing, and counting to your child are simple ways you can bond with them, help strengthen their brains and bodies, and protect their health. Your voice, your hugs, your love, build resilience and protect against the harmful effects of stress. So as California Surgeon General, this is my prescription.
Talk, read, sing.
Go to firstfivecalifornia.com.
Good morning and welcome to the Los Angeles City Council. Today is September 29th. I'm Nuri Martinez, the President of the City Council. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Bloomingfield.
Bloomingfield, present.
Bonin.
Bonin, present.
Buscaino.
Here.
Sadio.
Sadio, aye.
Harris Dawson.
Here.
Councilmember Corretts.
Present.
Thank you. Krikorian.
Here.
Lee.
Present.
Martinez.
Present.
O'Farrell.
Present.
Price.
Present.
Rodriguez.
Here.
Rue.
Here.
Wesson.
Here.
Fourteen members and a quorum. Madam President.
First order of business?
Approval of the minutes of September 23rd.
Ms. Rodriguez moves and Mr. O'Farrell seconds next.
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
Mr. Rue moves and Mr. Price seconds next.
Madam President, today is Tuesday and time for the flag salute.
Mr. Krikorian, can you please see this in the pledge of allegiance this morning?
It'd be my honor. Madam President, thank you. Members, if you could please rise, face the flag and mindful of the values that it represents, join me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, let's go ahead and run through the agenda.
Madam President, would council like all items to go forth with today?
Without objection, that will be the order. Next.
Items one through three are items noticed for public hearing. Items four through 20 are items for which public hearings have been held. Items 21 through 43 are items for which public hearings have not been held. And item 44 is a closed session item which has been considered by the Public Works and Gang Reduction Committee. Ten votes are required for consideration.
Okay, without objections, those items are now before us, members. Anyone wish to call any of these items special?
Madam Chair, for item three, I move to adopt the findings of public convenience and necessity. Thank you.
Is there a second?
A second.
Second by Mr. Buscaino. Okay, thank you, Mr. Sadio. Any others?
No, Madam Chair, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Bonin.
Thank you, Madam President. I'd like to call item 13 special for an amendment just asking for the report backs to come back within 60 days.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Rodriguez?
Thank you.
Any others, Mr. Bonin?
That'll be all, thank you.
Ms. Rodriguez?
I'd like to call items eight and 19 special for remarks, please.
Okay, items eight and nine special for Ms. Rodriguez.
Nineteen.
I'm sorry, nineteen. Thank you. Okay, Mr. Price?
Thank you, Madam President. Looking forward, I'd like to recuse myself from items 33 and 36 because of conflict, please.
Okay, Mr. Price has requested to be recused on items 33 and 36. Madam Clerk?
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Price. Members, any others? Okay, seeing none, why don't we go ahead and we can vote on items which public comment has been satisfied. Madam Clerk, which items are those?
And Madam President, that would be items four through seven, nine through 12, 14 through 18, and 20.
Okay, let's go ahead and prepare to vote on these items. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Bloomingfield.
Bloomingfield, aye.
Bonin.
Bonin, aye.
Buscaino.
Aye.
Sadio.
Sadio, aye.
Harris Dawson.
Yes.
Corretts.
Aye.
Krikorian.
Aye.
Lee.
Aye.
Martinez.
Aye.
O'Farrell.
Aye.
Price.
Aye.
Rodriguez.
Aye.
Rue.
Aye.
Wesson.
Wesson, aye.
Fourteen ayes, these items are adopted.
Okay, we can probably also vote on item 13 since it was a minor change?
Yes.
Is that correct, Mr. City Attorney? Mr. Bonin, do you want to speak on this item or can we go ahead and vote?
We can go ahead and vote.
All right, thank you. Go ahead and call the roll on item 13, Madam Clerk.
Bloomingfield.
Bloomingfield, aye.
Bonin.
Bonin, aye.
Buscaino.
Aye.
Sadio.
Sadio, aye.
Harris Dawson.
Yes.
Corretts.
Aye.
Krikorian.
Aye.
Lee.
Aye.
Martinez.
Aye.
O'Farrell.
Aye.
Price.
Aye.
Rodriguez.
Aye.
Rue.
Aye.
Wesson.
Aye.
Fourteen ayes, this item is adopted as amended.
Okay, Madam Clerk, we can also vote on closed item number 44, which came out of Public Works Committee. Mr. Bloomingfield, would you like to speak to this item?
No, just to say that it was heard in committee in closed session and the committee recommended moving forward.
Okay, let's go ahead and prepare to vote on item 44. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
And Madam President, if I may, in the case entitled Venice Investors LLC, Inc. versus the City of Los Angeles, the recommendation is to authorize the city attorney to execute the proposed settlement, which will confirm a street easement in favor of the city for all but the northernmost 13 feet of parcel two, which plaintiffs will continue to own in fee unburdened by a street easement. And on the balance of parcel two, plaintiffs may install fencing, landscaping, lighting, and a trash enclosure, but not any occupied structures, subject to the issuance of revocable permits. The city retains use of parcel two for public palm trees, widening the sidewalk, and a metro bike share station.
Okay, let's go ahead and prepare to vote on that item.
Bloomingfield.
Bloomingfield, aye.
Bonin.
Bonin, aye.
Buscaino.
Aye.
Sadio.
Sadio, aye.
Harris Dawson.
Yes.
Corretts.
Aye.
Krikorian.
Aye.
Lee.
Aye.
Martinez.
Aye.
O'Farrell.
Aye.
Price.
Aye.
Rodriguez.
Aye.
Rue.
Aye.
Wesson.
Aye.
Fourteen ayes, this item is adopted.
Okay, Madam Clerk, let's go ahead and move on to public comment.
As indicated on the agenda, members of the public wishing to offer public comment should call 669-254-5252 and use meeting ID number 160-535-8466 and press pound. Press pound again when prompted for participant ID. Once admitted into the meeting, press star nine to request to speak. Again, call 669-254-5252 and use meeting ID number 160-535-8466 and press pound. Press pound again when prompted for participant ID. Once admitted into the meeting, press star nine to request to speak.
I'll explain the speaking rules, Madam President.
Yes, can you also explain to the members of our public our issue we're having with our translator this morning?
Absolutely. So regarding the translator, unfortunately, she's running late. We don't have one right now. We're not quite sure when she'll arrive. We're going to do the best that we can. To members of the public calling in to speak, when it's your turn, please state which of the agenda items you'd like to speak on. You have one minute to speak, up to three minutes total, and if you wish, one minute for general public comment. Please speak on the agenda items first before providing general public comment. Item one is a hearing regarding the establishment of a business improvement district. Therefore, Madam President, I recommend that we reopen the phone lines later in the meeting to members of the public who did not have an opportunity to speak to the council but who still wish to speak on that item. So later on in the meeting, we will open the lines up again for item one only. When speaking on the agenda items, you must be on topic. Our goal is to get through as many speakers as we can. If you're not speaking on topic, or if we can't tell whether you're speaking on topic, you'll get one brief warning from me or the President. If you do not immediately get clearly on topic or against ray off topic, the President will cut you off and you'll forfeit the rest of your speaking time and we'll move on to the next speaker. We're going to take 40 minutes total of public comment. The items that are open for public comment are items one through three and 21 through 43. Finally, as you know, Zoom reconfigured its settings a bit, and the procedure that we're going to follow is we're going to move everyone into the waiting room as a block so that you can hear the meeting. When it's your turn to speak, you need to press star six to unmute yourself. So please, we realize that you might be listening on another device, your computer, please keep one ear for your number to be called out so that as soon as you hear someone address you, you can press star six and unmute yourself. If you only listen to the broadcast, it may cause a problem. Thank you very much, Madam President.
Thank you. Let's go ahead and take the first speaker.
Caller with the phone number ending in 4208, please press star six. Please state your name and the item you'd like to speak on.
Hi, Rob Vaughn. I'd like to speak on item one, 38, and 39, and general public comment.
Do you have your three minutes for your items and one minute for general public comment? Go ahead, Rob.
Thank you. I want to speak out in opposition to the Chinatown bid. It's absurd. You can try to make your arguments about bids, but the Chinatown bid is the absolute worst, and the fact that you have no accountability and no oversight over this bid shows just what's wrong with it. George Yu recently revealed as joking about unhoused residents getting electrocuted, and an officer responded with a bunch of smiley emojis. George Yu's private security forces have not only ran terror in Chinatown, but they actually operate outside of the boundaries of the Chinatown bid. He's avoided accountability by actually refusing to show up in court, costing the city more money, because these bids, you know, we actually do pay into them through our property taxes. You know, these things actually do get passed along to the city. For item 38, I think it's a little silly that John Lee is going to be the delegate to the League of Cities Conference. Hopefully, there are no developments with that whole FBI investigation, but being directly engaged with some of that obstruction of justice makes the optics a little weird there. And for item 39, speaking of optics, I think it's just kind of weird. Why are we setting up a special slush fund where developers are going to be propping up an office? The same people Jose Wees are hitting up, Kevin DeLeon's going to be hitting up to fund his office for $150,000. That seems like something we should be able to cover so we actually have independent representation. And lastly, I'd like to, you know, turn to current price. Once again, I'll never stop mentioning when you refuse to comply with California law. Once again, I'll never stop mentioning when you refuse to comply with California law and pointing out all of these council members that are sitting there silently as you flagrantly violate California law. Congratulations. For my general public comment, I'd like to speak about redistricting. Last month, the council took steps towards improving the process, but that's been completely undermined by council subsequent actions. Not one, not two, but three CLA letters about the appointment process have been distributed over the last month and not been publicly posted. We're now left with the least transparent redistricting process in three decades. And on the appointments, you know, City Hall insiders were expected, but not former L.A. city elected officials. The fact that our council isn't publicly, you know, displaying the appointment process undermines any argument that you'll actually comply with ex parte disclosure. And lastly, you know, I think it's a little funny that, you know, we see Michael Wu on here. I went through his personal files on Measure H and Ethics Reform, and I was able to see how, you know, Herb's old boss, Nate Holden, was opposing all the reforms that were happening and how Michael Wu was actively, in his own notes, said that he was concealing information from the Citizens Commission led by Jeffrey Callis. That's the nature of City Hall insiders and elected officials.
Thank you, Rob.
Please, appoint better people.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Caller with the phone number ending in one-one-four-eight, please press star-six. Please state your name and the item you'd like to speak on.
Yes, thank you. Good morning. I'd like to speak on all available items and general public comment, please.
Okay, all available items are one through three and twenty-one through forty-three. So you have three minutes for all items and one minute for your general public comment. Go ahead.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Martinez. Apologize to Ms. Autry. That's number one. This Chinatown property business improvement district, I agree with the previous caller, it smells of corruption. A wonderful thing that developers aren't getting away with. Number thirteen, have them comply with the sprinkler codes. Number fifteen, more money for the LAPD. Just another way around. You people give more money, five million dollars more, to the LAPD. That's really what we need. Great. The mayor's appointment, number twenty-one, of Matt Peterson to Metropolitan Water District. Eric Garcetti shouldn't be appointing anybody. He should probably be in jail for his policies, along with Herb Wesson, have driven this country, this city, into a homeless encampment. That's all it is, a big homeless encampment, but with these two people's appointments, their policies corrupt developers. Herb Wesson at the head, king of corruption, king of homelessness. He shouldn't be allowed to appoint anybody. Removing properties from reap is a great thing. You can't steal someone else's property. That's great. You didn't get all of them. That's number twenty-nine. Item number thirty-one, a motion to name Reverend Richard Byrd Square. It's an excellent thing. Of course, we need this. This is a great honor for the great Reverend Richard Byrd Mary Kara. Has done awesome things for the black community for umpteen years. He's a virtual saint. The only bad thing about this motion is sleazy Marquezis Dawson's name on it. At the same time, he's evicting a thousand people out of Dorset Village and onto the street, evicting the FIBA Center, tried to steal the unemployment office for himself on Fifty-fourth and Crenshaw. Reverend Byrd is a pillar of this community. It's not Dawson's idea. It just has his sleazy name on it. But all praises and all honor to Reverend Byrd. You're issuing bonds of sixteen million dollars for fifty-one units. It doesn't say if there are homeless units, three-hundred-and-fifty-thousand, twenty thousand dollars apiece. Number thirty-nine, special funding for Kevin DeLeon.
Sir.
The corrupt Los Angeles City Council.
Sir, can you move on to your general public comment now? Thank you.
Yes, thank you. Martinez, apologize to Ms. Autry. Be a big person. Be a person, period. Do the right thing. Apologize. You haven't because you're not big enough. Hopefully, you will be. The L.A. City Council, members of the public, vote trade. Vote trading is at the core of the Los Angeles sleazy council's corruption. Under Wesson, ninety-nine percent of these votes are yes votes. They just vote for whatever the other districts want. Dawson has more office. He has over a million dollars this, over the last year, that this council has given him for office changes. The four-hundred-and-eighty-eight-thousand-three-hundred-and-fifty-one, three-hundred-and-five-thousand, next is the one coming up for five-hundred-and-forty-one-thousand when people are starving in the streets.
Thank you.
Public, this is the City Council.
Thank you. Your time is up. Next speaker.
Caller with the phone number ending in six-zero-six-eight, please press star-six. Please state your name and the item you'd like to speak on.
Hi, yes, this is Richie Serjanko from People City Council and Sunrise Movement, L.A. I would like to speak on general public comment. I would like to speak on agenda item one, agenda item thirty, and agenda item thirty-nine, please.
Okay, you go ahead. You have three minutes for your items and one minute for general public comment.
Yeah, I just wanted to call, just like the other callers, and invoice my opposition to the Chinatown bid. You all need to reject the bid. You know, generally, bids use taxpayer money to fund private security forces that harass and brutalize unhoused. Bids prioritize development and gentrification. Not to mention that this specific person that is tied up in this Chinatown bid, George Yu, he's joked about letting the unhoused electrocute themselves to bring about natural selection. George Yu has personally led the way by bullying unhoused residents both in the bid and outside of its boundaries. Our current system is so rigged that city property automatically votes to support the bid. We should abolish bids in an undemocratic system. Although that, you know, the city isn't putting any money into the bids directly, the city does pay property taxes on those bids. And so this is taxpayer dollars that the people are vocally opposing what the city is doing. And so our taxpayer dollars do go towards bids because of the property taxes. Back to George Yu. He leads a lawless organization, wasted city money as they refuses to comply with CPRA requests, even after losing in court. George Yu makes sure to support his friends at City Hall. Ethics disclosures show that he's personally donated to Mitch O'Farrell and Gil Sadio. He's hosted fundraisers for Weezar and Harris Dawson.
Speaker, which item are you on?
Oh, agenda item one.
Yeah, I'm not quite sure how it ties up, so please continue, but make sure it's clearly connected to item one.
Is George Yu not connected to agenda item one with the Chinatown bid?
Go ahead.
So I am on, so I was on topic. Thank you, Streffan. George Yu has cost the city tens of thousands of dollars for failing to even show up to court over a CPRA lawsuit. So I just, general question for city council members, why? Why do you all keep him around? I mean, if we do, we have answers to that, obviously. You're all corrupt and you don't really care about people in the city. But generally, Angelenos are asking, like, why? Why do you keep doing business with George Yu? Agenda item thirty-eight, we oppose John Lee as the voting delegate for League of Cities Conference. You all are going on recess next week. Good time for a break. You guys haven't had enough time off. Comes two months just since your last recess. John Lee is still under investigation in the FBI, directly connected to criminal acts and obstruction of justice with Mitch Englander. So I don't get why John Lee still has a job. I don't know why he hasn't resigned.
You can go on to your general public comment, please.
General public comment, okay, cool. Yeah, so we're still calling to beef on the police, cancel rent, stop evictions. I believe Nuri Martinez even said at a press conference last week where she, you know, she was out there talking about eviction defense and things like that, and Nuri said, like, landlords are still trying to evict people. So with that knowledge, instead of trying to pass any, you know, financial regulations, why not just stop evictions? Why not just cancel rent? Don't create a fund that will go to landlords? Why not just cancel rent and pass laws that say there should be no evictions right now? You know, people are paying attention. Hope you guys all can see that. You can't operate in the darkness anymore. Fuck George Yu and read the letter pinned at Michael Colehouse's Twitter. His app is
Thank you, your time is up, thank you.
K-O-H-L.
Next speaker.
Caller with the phone number ending in seven-zero-zero-six, please press star-six. Please state your name.
Alive and checking, mommy! All items and general public comment.
Okay, you have got three minutes on your items and one minute for general public comment. Go ahead, Mr. Spindler.
Oh, appreciate it. All right, let's start with the good news. Forty-three, like Bonin, great job. Great job. Twenty-five thousand dollars for each arsonist. Is that what we got here? Well, he didn't put down the reward. It's actually a Starbucks card, but a good job. Now we have staffer B, John Lee, FBI target. What, mommy, mommy! Thirty-eight, you're letting that FBI target represented vote for our city? Now, come on now. No, no, no. Gil, the other night I was talking to him about this, and he said in the middle of the conversation, "Fuck you!", and I was like, okay. So I say, "Fuck you" to item number thirty-eight. No, I'm thirty-eight. John Lee will be indicted, or he will cooperate, or he is cooperating with the FBI, but he backdated a check for a gift that was sixty-eight thousand dollars of partial bottle service. As outlined in the United States versus Mitchell Englander, Nuri, look up the affidavit by Special Agent Cirillo, not related to Sadio. And you'll see that John Lee's got his fingerprints all over that FBI probe. Don't send an FBI target to represent our city. You can't. Send Strohman-Fabel to represent our city. He's a criminal, but at least he has a bar card, unlike Paul Krikorian. Now we get to number twenty-nine. Good job. Now you see what happens? When you do a good job, we and the other gadflies critics are the first to say so. Look at this. Thank you to Gil on A. Thank you to Rue on B. Thank you to Marquezis, Sleazy, Harris Dawson on C. Thank you to Blob, Blob, and Blob. All these landlords now will get their properties back out of hock. Good job. Now, we have the forbidden item. I'm going to come back to that later. Now we have number three. Oh, we got a liquor license in CD one. Whoa, excuse me, what? Excuse me. This is the goat puppet, sir. Remember our peace treaty with Mr. Sadio? Oh, that's right, that's right.
Please get on top of it, Mr. Spindler.
I'm deferring. Well, yeah, that's my associate. Okay, yes, pursuant to the peace treaty of 2019, yes, we're deferring to the judgment and sound judgment of Mr. Sadio regarding item number three. Now, item number two, issuing revenue bonds for Monica? Monica, you little cunt! Now you're stealing money like Marquezis. No, no, no.
Move on to your general public comment, Mr. Spindler.
Oh, okay, yeah. You want to read City Watch. Now Gil Sadio, AKA Gil Sadio. Now, you heard the word "fuck you". Now, we hear the word "fuck you" every day here at public comment. I yield my time, fuck you, et cetera, right? So what's wrong with a council member saying "fuck you"? It feels good. So let's all say "fuck you". Fuck you to the FBI. And fuck you to Donald Trump. And Amy Coney Barrett is a fucking cunt! So it feels good. I like what Gil's doing. Gil is expanding the First Amendment to council members. Now, you can all say, when you're done and don't like public comment, "Fuck you, Speaker!". Fuck your mother. I wish your fucking mother had an abortion. Yes, sir. Gil Sadio doing a good job. Yes, fuck the speakers. Fuck the bid.
Thank you, Mr. Spindler.
Thank you, Mr. Spindler.
Fuck all of you.
Caller with the phone number ending in six-nine-zero-eight, please press star-six. Please state your name and the item you'd like to speak on.
My name is Una Kang Benninger, and I would like to speak on item number one in support of the Chinatown BID.
Okay, you have one minute. Go ahead.
I would just like to state that, so I am a business owner in Chinatown. My husband and I owned the Little Jewel of New Orleans, and we've had this restaurant for the past six years now. And throughout the time that we've been here, the Chinatown BID has been an immensely helpful resource. We've actually had three break-ins to our location, and that's just, you know, that's just the tip of the iceberg on what we experience, like, almost on a daily basis of, you know, issues that, you know, need to be dealt with with, like, professional security. And also, given the fact that Chinatown's population is, you know, highly elderly, there's a lot of mentally ill, a lot of homeless, all the jails nearby that, you know, are releasing inmates. Given all that, you know, there needs to be a constant presence of patrol. And dealing with the, you know, with the cops, it doesn't, you know, really cut it. They're overloaded themselves.
Thank you.
And
Thank you for calling. Your time is up. Thank you. Next speaker.
Caller with the phone number ending in nine-three-three-three, please press star-six. Please state your name and the item you'd like to speak on.
Sure, my name is Hector Verdugo. I'm with Homeboy Industries, and I wanted to talk about the renewal of Chinatown bid.
Go ahead. You have one minute.
Got it. So I just want to support the Chinatown bid. Just because since Homeboy came around into Chinatown, I feel like looking at the Chinatown bid and see how they take care of business in Chinatown. You know, for me, the biggest thing that I really love to see and is working with is their their red-shirt security people, the Chinatown security. Just, these guys have been coming around, working with us, and helping us, you know, stop crime. They're our link to LAPD, and I just really enjoy their services. Working with the Chinatown bid on the business part, I got I got these guys helping us with just our business, just really just going out of their way, seeing how they can be able to help Homeboy Industries and serving the community. I love the bridge, the safety, and just the relationship with Chinatown. You know, I work closely with George Yu, and I like to see the way he works with the homeless.
Thank you, Mr.
I see that he knows the homeless by name and trying to get them into
Thank you, Speaker.
Thank you for calling, and your time is up. I'm sorry I have to cut you off. But thank you for calling. Next speaker.
Caller with the phone number ending in zero-seven-eight-eight, please press star-six. Caller with the phone number ending in zero-seven-eight-eight, please press star-six. Please state your name and the item you'd like to speak on.
My name is Phyllis Chu, and I'd like to speak on one-three and public comment.
So you have two minutes for your items and one minute for a general public comment. Go ahead.
Okay. As a stakeholder in Chinatown, I ask the council not to support the irregular renewal process of the Chinatown Bid. The Bid does not support the small businesses already in the community or improve the business climate, except to bring in expensive hipster restaurants and bars to Far East Plaza, in which George Yu, his executive director, has a stake. Yu has an arrest warrant put out for him for failing to submit public records and failing to appear in court. He sends communications, meeting notices and nomination forms late to stifle opposition. In fact, Bid did not receive the necessary support from the community to be renewed so Yu thinks he can go to his friends in the council to reverse his fortunes. Chinatown does not need to be represented by a corrupt director of an organization that has done nothing to help small businesses, the core of the community, that have suffered during the pandemic. There is no transparency or accountability in how the heavy assessments have been spent. Bid instead supports gentrification as a way forward, pushing out markets and affordable restaurants, harassing street vendors, residents and unhoused neighbors, anyone who doesn't have the right look to appeal to wealthy hipster visitors. The street musicians, street vendors and sidewalk displays Bid despises are part of our culture and make our community unique. But Bid prefers a Disneyland version of Chinatown. Exotic facades housing hip businesses with no relationship to the borrowed facade and most importantly, no immigrant or low-income residents to disturb the sanitized version. What the community really needs to thrive and continue its long history of welcoming and serving immigrants is affordable housing, accessible healthcare and businesses that residents patronize. Supermarkets, affordable restaurants, et cetera, not bars and expensive fried chicken. We do not want the council to force a bid that is unsupported by the community upon us. Vote no to renewing a self-serving and corrupt bid. Thank you.
Thank you.
Call in user number one, please press star six. Please state your name and the item you'd like to speak on.
Mommy? Mommy, can you hear me?
Which items do you want to speak on?
Mommy, can you hear me?
Speaker, let us know which items you want to speak on.
Oh, you fucking cunt, I wanna speak on item three. I wanna speak on all other items and my general public comment, which amounts to three plus one is four asshole.
Go ahead, Mr. Herman.
Mommy, well mommy, you know, I'm really in favor of China business in Korea business area. We want to improve more drinking, sell rice patties to fools who believe America is great. But you know mommy, we vote for Trump, we win. We vote for Ophu, Ophu give us one ton soup, no good. Yeah. Then, then, then I see you at meeting today mommy, you and the fool who interrupted me for many time. We must allow COVID-19 to help us succeed in no work for nigger to stay home and collect chalk. Chalk make you rich? No. Oh, I want to repeat what other speaker says, fuck you. Thank you, Gil Sadio asshole. Now, let me go back to public comment. You know that COVID-19 gives you free money from government. You can help improve the industry, restaurant business very good for drinking in public. So we can have rice beer, orange beer, protein beer with rice.
Mr. Herman, what item are you speaking to?
During the emergency crisis.
Mr. Herman?
Did the asshole listen to me mommy?
Please get on topic.
He's not interrupting, very good, he won. Now let me go to my general public comment, one minute asshole. As you know asshole, you need to not interrupt speakers. Speakers like Donald Trump have balls, big balls, to inform you that the society of systemic corruption involves you. So like Mr. Sadio said, fuck you. Mr. Wayne Spindler says fuck you. And I, the puppet master, say fuck you too, white nigger too. Because we live in harmony, or is it harmony? The shit you put in your menudo to make your flabby arms fatter mommy. But besides that, my time is coming to an end. COVID-19 and the debate tonight to hear that jackass Biden fucking fool. And you need to apologize to Ms. Autry mommy. Ms. Autry's a good lady. She knows assholes from jack assholes.
Thank you, Mr. Herman, next speaker?
And I know asshole too, cuz asshole is nice to interrupt.
Caller with the phone number ending in 3512, please press star six. Caller with the phone number ending in 3512, please press star six. Caller with the phone number ending in 3512, please press star six. Caller with the phone number ending in 8495, please press star six. Caller with the phone number ending in 8495, please press star six. Caller with the phone number ending in 5137, please press star six. Please state your name and the item you'd like to speak on.
Good morning, my name is Jamie Penn. I'm the resident representative for the Wilshire Center Koreatown Neighborhood Council, Sub District Three. I'm also a volunteer for Koreatown For All. That means that I spend my free time providing food and water to my unhoused neighbors. That means I literally talk to them face to face.
What items do you want to speak on?
I just wanna speak on agenda item number one, number thirty-eight, number thirty-nine, as well as make a general public comment. I just ask that you bear with me as it's all the same comment.
You have three minutes for your items and one minute for your general public comment. Go ahead.
Thank you. Our problem right now, if you're willing to listen, council, to put it very, very plainly, is that the services we're being provided are not what we need to solve the problems our community is facing. We need funding to help our houseless neighbors, we need funding to replace the out-of-control and demonstrably violent police officers and sheriffs in this city with real solutions. And we need a new system of responses to mental health crises. And we could fund all of these things by defunding the police. The exact opposite direction is funding a private bid services, such as the establishment of the Chinatown Property and Business Improvement District, hiring individuals that have even less training, less oversight, and they even actually wear uniforms that are very similar to police without actually having any official authority. And anywhere else that I've lived in the country, this would be called impersonating a police officer. So we need to defund the police, stop funding bids, fund the organizations who are doing the work as unpaid volunteers. Thank you. I yield the rest of my time.
Thank you, next caller?
Caller with the phone number ending in 7543, please press star six.
Hi.
Please state your name and the item you'd like to speak on.
Yes, hi, good morning, my name is Lionel Modis, I'm from the Valley, calling to make a general comment, please.
Sure, you have a minute, please go ahead.
Yes, thank you very much. I'm calling about the Los Angeles Department of Water and Power Generating Station on Sheldon and San Fernando in Sun Valley in my neighborhood. I just heard that, that the power plant has been releasing methane, a toxic form of gas into the atmosphere, and I live nearby and I am concerned as a resident of City Six, I'm concerned about the quality of air in addition to the pollution and the smoke, so about my health and my lungs, so I would like for the city council to do something about it to make sure that no more methane or other toxic form of gas are being released. And secondly, I would like to address vandalism like tagging in, in my neighborhood because I noticed that there's a lot of taggers and every time the businesses, local businesses, they try to paint over a tagging, the taggers keep coming up. So I don't know if some adolescents are having issues or it's gang-related, but we have to maybe create programs for youth, for them to divert their energy from negative to positive energy.
Thank you.
Except...
Thank you for calling.
Caller with the phone number ending in 9299, please press star six. Please state your name and the item you'd like to speak on.
Yeah, my name is Joanna, I'd like to speak on item one.
You have one minute, go ahead.
And a general comment as well.
You wanna speak, I didn't hear you, you wanna speak on item number one?
Yeah, I'd like to speak on item one and also make a general comment, please.
Okay, you have one minute for each, go ahead.
Awesome. So does anyone here find it weird that you're making a bunch of property owners who technically don't even live in the area, decision makers for Chinatown communities? The people like Jenny Harris, who's a New Yorker transplant and employee of Atlas Capital, which is currently gentrifying Chinatown, she's the one deciding priorities for working class of young LA. How deeply ironic that DTLA NIMBY groups right now are calling out grassroots organizations for being out of area when the majority of these folks in downtown are recent implants themselves. Call me an outsider, for sure, the first interaction I had with Bid was in downtown when I lived there, when an unhoused neighbor had its belongings and shelter soured and kerosene by an art district's security guard. How many of these NIMBYs have been out on the streets distributing PPE or water as these grassroots orgs are doing? Gil Sadio likes to show, you know, he's from People Colors of Law, he's liberal, he pretends he's for the people while he makes backdoor deals with hotels and bid lobbyists. You're no better than Mitch Gil, okay, who keeps hotels in working class communities. Maybe instead of making one meeting with corrupt lobbyists like Maury Goldman, who took a plea deal for his role in the Hiza corruption, who George Yu also hires incidentally, this is your chance to prove you care, to provide better alternatives than Bid for community health and safety. This is your opportunity to show the wealthy backers you continue to have backroom meetings with, that actually their position is unpopular, their position is out of touch and is actually quite literally murderous. Please keep the phrase Black Lives Matter out of your mouth, as long as you still move to renew this Bid after over a year of meetings and demands from community members. You know all about the violence against the black unhoused residents brought by George Yu and the Bid and LAPD, coordinated police harassment. The lack of support for residents who are being targeted by this systemic racist harassment is a glaring indictment of your complacency when it comes to injustice in your own damn city. You care about Kenosha, about Louisville, you care about Los Angeles too. And for the businesses and NIMBYs who handering about relief of inmates and rampant mental illness, why don't you do something other than fucking call the cops? Non-consensual restraint is one of the most harmful and traumatizing strategies for dealing with mental health crises. If you care about this, work on community of alternatives to 911 in your community. Offer free water and masks, cultivate trust and solidarity with your unhoused neighbors rather than cultivating fear and suspicion.
Thank you.
Do I have general comment now? Is that two minutes?
You've already done your general...
Thank you, you've already covered your two minutes.
That's my two minutes? Okay, cool, well, that's great.
Thank you.
Caller with the phone number ending in 0314, please press star six. Please state your name and the item you'd like to speak on.
Amy Bishop, I'm calling to speak on agenda item number thirty-four with a general public comment, please.
Would you please restate which item did you want to speak on, speaker?
Agenda item number thirty-four.
Okay, you, you have a minute, please go ahead.
Sure. First and foremost, on behalf of Akeem's family, we thank you for considering this motion. It's with a heavy heart that we ask the members of the board to approve this motion for the reward in the amount of fifty thousand dollars for anyone with the leads leading to the arrest of the killer, Akeem. Akeem was an outstanding, law-abiding citizen of the community and a hard worker at LADWP, where he had a promising future. So much so, it was the first time in LADWP's history to bring a utility truck to the memorial, showcasing Akeem's work boots, vest and hard hat. Akeem leaves tomorrow to smart children and a host of family, friends and coworkers at LADWP. We feel that offering this reward would encourage individuals to speak up and ultimately identifying the arrest, identifying and arresting the killer, resulting in the removal of a bad seed out of the community, preventing further murders and other potential criminal activity involving violence and death. We thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you, next caller?
Caller with the phone number ending in 8156, please press star six. Please state your name and the item you'd like to speak on.
Hi, my name is Mario Correa, I'd like to speak on item number one, plus a general comment.
I'm sorry, we're having a hard time hearing you. What items do you want to speak on again?
Hi, I'd like to speak on item number one, plus a general comment.
Okay, you have one minute for each, go ahead.
Hi, my name is Mario Correa, I'm a resident, twenty-year resident of Chinatown. I'm an artist, I came here in 2001, Chinatown is my home and workplace. I've lived peacefully for many years, building relationships with my community and doing my best to be a good neighbor. In 2016, my partner and I were asked to be a part of a support system for Theo Henderson, who was being harassed by Chinatown BID. When we met Theo, he was a well-respected member of the Chinatown community, a martial artist, an instructor, a tutor. Since then, he has become a powerful voice for the unhoused community. Theo Henderson and his podcast, We the Unhoused, have garnered tremendous local and even international support for his groundbreaking work. In 2016, we began to see the harassment from BID very quickly. Chinatown BID red shirts regularly stalk Theo around Chinatown. They also stop and question delivery drivers, black delivery drivers. I've also seen George Yu personally stalk a black unhoused woman, recording her from his car. As recently as last week, BID guards were again threatening my partner and I online. Captain William Martinez of the BID red shirts messaging me to come outside, that guards were waiting outside my door. This was in retaliation for opposing this renewal. The next morning, BID guard was outside my door recording me and for the second time, a false charge came from BID and they tried to have me arrested by LAPD. As a long-term Chinatown resident, I've witnessed years of BID's failure to serve our residents and small businesses. I've seen its harm toward our vulnerable neighbors and I oppose the renewal of Chinatown BID and appeal to you to hold the community predator accountable. Thank you.
Thank you. That concludes public comment for this meeting. Madam Clerk, let's go ahead and prepare to vote on the following items. Item number two, items twenty-one through thirty-two, items thirty-four through thirty-five, and items thirty-eight through forty-three. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Blumenfeld.
Blumenfeld, aye.
Bonin.
Bonin, aye.
Buscaino.
Aye.
Sadio.
Aye.
Harris Dawson.
Yes.
Carretts.
Yes.
Krikorian.
Aye.
Lee.
Aye.
Martinez.
Aye.
O'Farrell.
Aye.
Price.
Aye.
Rodriguez.
Aye.
Rue.
Aye.
Wesson.
Aye.
Fourteen ayes, this item is adopted.
Okay, let's move on to item number three. This was amended by Mr. Sadio, seconded by Mr. Buscaino. Mr. Sadio, do you want, do you wish to speak on this item?
No, Madam Chair, we're good to go.
And, Mr. Sadio, this is Sadio attorney, let me just clarify, so your motion was to adopt the findings and grant the application, is that correct?
Yes, correct.
Thank you.
Okay, let's go ahead and prepare to vote on item number three. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Blumenfeld.
Blumenfeld, aye. Blumenfeld, aye.
Bonin.
Bonin, aye.
Buscaino.
Aye.
Sadio.
Aye.
Harris Dawson.
Yes.
Carretts.
Aye.
Krikorian. Lee.
Aye.
Martinez.
Aye.
O'Farrell.
Aye.
Price.
Aye.
Rodriguez.
Aye.
Rue.
Aye.
Wesson.
Yes.
Fourteen ayes, this item is adopted.
Okay, let's move on to item thirty-seven, there was a substitute motion introduced, so why don't we go ahead and take two votes on this item? First vote is to substitute. So go ahead and call the roll, Madam Clerk.
Thank you, Madam President. Blumenfeld.
Blumenfeld, aye.
Bonin.
Bonin, aye.
Bonin, aye.
Buscaino.
Aye.
Sadio.
Aye.
Harris Dawson.
Yes.
Caretz.
Aye.
Krikorian.
Aye.
Lee.
Aye.
Martinez.
Aye.
O'Farrell.
Aye.
Price.
Aye.
Rodriguez.
Aye.
Rue.
Aye.
Wesson.
Aye.
14 ayes, this item has been substituted.
Okay, let's go ahead and vote on the item now.
Blumenfeld.
Blumenfeld, aye.
Bonin.
Bonin, aye.
Buscaino.
Aye.
Sadio.
Sadio, aye.
Harris Dawson.
Yes.
Caretz.
Aye.
Krikorian.
Aye.
Lee.
Aye.
Martinez.
Aye.
O'Farrell.
Aye.
Price. Councilmember Price.
Aye.
Rodriguez.
Aye.
Rue.
Aye.
Wesson. Councilmember Wesson.
Aye.
14 ayes, this substitute motion has been adopted.
Okay, let's go ahead and vote on items 33 and 36. Let's take those together, Madam Clerk. There's been a request by Mr. Price to recuse himself on both items. So if you can please make sure he's off the board. Okay, we're ready to go. Go ahead and call the roll.
Blumenfeld.
Blumenfeld, aye.
Bonin.
Bonin, aye.
Buscaino.
Aye.
Sadio.
Sadio, aye.
Harris Dawson.
Yes.
Caretz.
Aye.
Krikorian.
Aye.
Lee.
Aye.
Martinez.
Aye.
O'Farrell.
Aye.
Price recused. Rodriguez.
Aye.
Rue.
Aye.
Wesson.
Aye.
13 ayes, these items are adopted.
Okay, let's move on to item number eight, called special by Ms. Rodriguez.
Thank you, Madam President. Colleagues, last month, we became aware of a methane leak that is emanating from the Valley Generation Station in Sun Valley, in Ms. Martinez's district. This particular facility is one that has, as we know, these are regional impacts. This is not something that impacts and restricted to impacting the immediate area of a council district. It extends itself well beyond any council district boundaries. The frustrating part of what transpired with this entire situation was that, much like the methane leak, information was not transparent, it was not visible, it was not forthcoming from the Department of Water and Power. And that has been one of the most frustrating and disappointing parts of everything that has evolved since discovering this leak. This motion is to help address that very situation. It was only when JPL determined that there was a methane leak that we all became publicly aware of this situation. And so, as a result of that, I'm requesting and directing that the Department of Water and Power work in consultation with our Bureau of Street Lighting to help do installations of air quality monitoring systems, because we shouldn't be waiting for other entities to let us know when we are having these problems. And frankly, it's been, it's just been unconscionable that our own Department of Water and Power would not have the systems in place to assure the safety and protections for members of our community, communities that have had to endure for far too long the environmental injustices that have now enabled this circumstance to continue to evolve. So colleagues, I ask for your aye vote, and I want to thank my colleagues. I know we have forthcoming other efforts that we will be establishing to help address and mitigate this going forward. But, you know, this is not something, this is not reflective of who we are as a city, and these are some of the efforts that we need to be investing in and deploying in these areas to help protect our communities going forward. May I ask for your aye vote?
Okay, Madam Clerk, Mr. Caretz.
Thank you, Madam President, and thank you to Councilmember Rodriguez for bringing this forward. This is a problem in many ways, and obviously another environmental disaster. But one of them is also internal communications, and hopefully DWP will improve that as well, because as I understand it, the initial DWP staff that knew about this just essentially put it on a list to be fixed eventually, and did not communicate it up the chain where presumably the higher-up management would have reacted much more quickly. So they need to both do the kind of monitoring that is necessary. It's absurd that we wound up finding out about this essentially by accident. We could have gone many more years without ever knowing about it. And even more absurd that initial staff did know about it and then didn't communicate it to the folks that would have prioritized it. So a lot to be done. I think the monitoring equipment is absolutely key, not just around this station, but all our similar facilities. And thank you again, Ms. Rodriguez, for bringing this forward.
Thank you, colleagues. I do want to point out, though, that I want to recognize, in particular, the organization that's been organizing on the ground on this issue for quite some time, and that's Bacoima Beautiful. And I cannot reiterate enough the lack of respect that this department has had for this community. Eventually, the long-term goal is to eventually shut this down. There shouldn't be a reason why this community continues to carry the burden for the rest of the city of Los Angeles. So as someone who lives in Sun Valley and has been dealing with this issue for quite some time, it's outrageous that this department did not communicate what was happening there. So moving forward, we have a series of motions that we're going to be bringing to City Council. We had a me, a hearing on this issue about a week and a half ago in Energy Committee, so this is something that's going to continue to come to us, so we've got to do the right thing by the community and by the northeast San Fernando Valley. So with that, Madam Clerk, can you please call the roll on item number eight?
Blumenfeld.
Blumenfeld, aye.
Bonin.
Bonin, aye.
Buscaino.
Aye.
Sadio.
Sadio, aye.
Harris Dawson.
Yes.
Caretz.
Aye.
Krikorian.
Aye.
Lee.
Aye.
Martinez.
Aye.
O'Farrell.
Aye.
Price.
Aye.
Rodriguez.
Aye.
Rue.
Aye.
Wesson.
Yes.
14 ayes, this item is adopted.
Let's move on to item number 19, called special by Ms. Rodriguez.
Thank you, Madam President and colleagues. This item is with respect to an upcoming ballot proposition that will be on the November ballot, and that is Proposition 16. Proposition 16 is going to repeal the ills of what 209 promised and delivered, and that was to suppress opportunities for communities of color up and down the state of California. You know, in the city of Los Angeles, and going back to my work on the Board of Public Works, when we were trying to, and we continue to try and make repairs and amend our procurement process to make it a far more competitive and accessible process for small minority and women-owned businesses. And we can continue to make those efforts that will make that system more nimble, more accessible, more user-friendly, but that will not address some of the systemic shortfalls of how we do contracting here in Los Angeles, and helping to create greater opportunities for more competitiveness, but more importantly, for those smaller entities, those up-and-coming businesses, that frankly would stand far greater chance of being successful if they were given that edge and that opportunity. And Prop 16 is going to help achieve that. I'm asking for your support with this particular resolution, because right now, we are in a moment in time where we have an opportunity to make the systemic changes necessary to what has historically suppressed communities of color throughout the state of California. This is an important measure, and I ask for your aye vote.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Rodriguez. Let's go ahead and prepare to vote on this item, item 19. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Blumenfeld.
Blumenfeld, aye.
Bonin.
Bonin, aye.
Buscaino.
Aye.
Sadio.
Sadio, aye.
Harris Dawson.
Yes.
Caretz.
Aye.
Krikorian.
Aye.
Lee.
Aye.
Martinez.
Aye.
O'Farrell.
Aye.
Price.
Aye.
Rodriguez.
Aye.
Rue.
Aye.
Wesson.
Wesson, aye.
14 ayes, this item is adopted.
Okay, let's move on to item number one. Mr. Sadio Attorney, we need to reopen public hearing for this item. Before we do that, Mr. Sadio, would you like to speak to the item, or can I go ahead and reopen public comment?
Madam Chair, please go forward with open public comment.
All right, thank you. Mr. Sadio Attorney?
Yes, so we're going to reopen for item one only. And let me just repeat the call and information very briefly. For people who want to speak to item one, please call 669-254-5252, and use meeting ID 1605354866, and then press pound, and press pound again when prompted for participant ID. So again, that's 669-254-5252, followed by meeting ID 1605358466, and then press pound, and press pound again. When we call your identifying information, so that you know it's your turn to speak, then please press star six to unmute yourself. And again, as always, turn down the volume on any devices that you're listening to, so that you're following the meeting in real time.
All right, thank you. Let's go ahead and open the lines and take the first caller.
Caller with the phone number ending in 4571, please press star six. Please state your name and speak on item number one.
Hi, my name is Garrett Quan. I am a fourth-generation business owner, a board member and officer of the Los Angeles Chinatown Corporation. I am speaking in support of the Chinatown BID. The BID throws events in Chinatown that have greatly increased the influx of people and resident, or people that we usually don't have in the area. This means a lot, a lot of income for my business, and, yeah, it's something that's extremely vital. It can make or break a year based on how many of these events that are allowed to throw into the plaza. The security is a great solution to not calling the Los Angeles Police Department. They have a cardinal knowledge of the city. They know a lot of the transients and people that we have issues with by name and are allowed to interact with them on a more personal level. And rather than instantly calling LAPD, they can de-escalate the situation and bring the situation down. And a lot of the times, the issues are resolved right then and there without LAPD interdirection.
All right, thank you. Thank you, Speaker. Your time is up. Next caller?
Caller with the phone number 9404, please press star six. Please, please state your name and speak on item one.
Yes, this is Angelica Moyes, and I wanted to acknowledge and appreciate the comments of Hector of Homeboy Industries and Una of Little Jewel. I'm actually speaking in opposition of the renewal of the bid. I agree with them that there is some benefit to the services of the bid, no doubt, and yet the services provided have been provided inequitably, among other issues. There is overwhelming opposition against the renewal of this bid, primarily due to lack of transparency of processes. There have been records, requests for financial records and more, which have been ignored. Further, there are some contracts that present conflicts of interest. And as mentioned earlier, I wanted to emphasize that the bid operates beyond, often operates beyond its official boundaries, intimidating and harassing individuals in the neighborhood. Regarding the timeline, I did look at some of the records of correspondence and saw that the city clerk determined in December 2019 that the petitions be disseminated.
Thank you, Speaker.
Those petitions.
Thank you, Speaker. Everyone has one minute to speak on this item, so just move on to the next caller.
Caller with the phone number ending in 7006, please press star six. Please state your name and speak on item number one.
I love, aye, so called bid.
So.
Bid, buddy, call.
No, no, you've already had your time to speak, Speaker. Move on to the next person.
Caller with the phone number ending in 1438, please press star six. Please state your name and speak on item number one.
Hi, my name is Snowpall. So I lived in Chinatown for over 30 years, and my mom had this small shop in Chinatown. I do not support the renewal of BID. BID has failed the community even with the large amount of funds taken. TCDBA has shared 33 business owners from the original 414, 10 years ago, which means that the business has not been thriving. What's worse is this entity is led by the most hated in Chinatown, George Yu. He partners up with developers who are also on the BID board to continue gentrifying Chinatown even further. They obviously do not care for the older small businesses in Chinatown like they do for the new, where hip businesses they bought in. Where are they this year when we've been in a pandemic for seven months, and how have they supported small businesses that are suffering severely at this time? At their meetings, they focus on new businesses and doesn't include supporting the older small businesses. They should have been, this should have been the time they stepped up, yet we face more disappointments. The BID securities are our solid joke. They're lazy, bully, and are.
Thank you, caller.
Caller with the phone number ending in 8495, please press star six. Please state your name and speak on item number one.
Yeah, my name is Francis Quinn. I'm a community member of Chinatown. I'm speaking in opposition of the renewal of bid. Anyone who speaks in favor of bid does not represent Chinatown, does not care about working-class people. George Yu and BID is extremely racist in classes. They are anti-poor, anti-black, anti-homeless, homeless, security harassed low-income tenants, small businesses, street vendors, and homeless residents. BID doesn't keep Chinatown safe. It makes residents fearful in the very place they've been calling home for years. George Yu has directly threatened to hurt and kill people. Alongside other developers who sit on the bid's board of directors, George Yu consistently gives council members the deal money every single year. I wonder why. Sadio, are you really going to continue accepting money from predatory developers and a racist, classless, hungry power man and support the bid? It's obvious that both BID and the city are serving the interests of developers who are trying to gentrify our working-class communities and build market rate developments while violently displacing tenants. BID is trash. Abolish the bid.
Thank you. Next caller?
Caller with the phone number 1148, please press star six. Please state your name and speak on item number one.
Item number one is obvious. The small businesses, the.
So, I think Mr. Moses, you've already had a chance to speak on this item. So this is really a time for people who have not had a chance to speak, to speak on item one. So we need to move on to the next speaker.
Caller with the phone number ending in 6557, please press star six. Please state your name and speak on item number one.
Caller, are you there? Okay, let's move on to the next caller.
Can you hear me? Hello?
Yes.
Okay. My name is Tommy. I'm with Street Watch. So I knew, I know, I do outreach in downtown sometimes, and I know someone who lived in an alley in Chinatown, and there
an alley in Chinatown and there was a bid officer that came and told him he had to leave one day. He didn't leave because he had nowhere to fucking go and the next day, the same bid officer and another unknown plain shirt guy came and beat the shit out of him because he wouldn't leave. So these are the kind of people that you're funding. They, we know they attack on house, we know, they explicitly serve the interests of business owners and real estate interests. I mean, it's in, it's in the voting laws, right? It's not about one person, one vote. It's about like how much property you own, then you not only get to control private space in Chinatown, but you get to control public space as well. So you're basically giving business owners control over the entire fucking area of Chinatown. And even, even the businesses didn't even meet these rules for voting. You got 24% of the vote, you need 50. So like, it's bullshit. It's clearly bullshit. Just get rid of the fucking rules and let them do whatever.
Next caller.
Caller with the phone number ending in 2504, please press star six.
Hello?
Please state your name and speak on item number one.
My name is Christina Lee and I'd like to strongly support the continuation of the Chinatown Business District. The Bid has been integral to bringing new services and activities to the neighborhood while supporting its long-term residents and business owners. It has cleaned up parks, hosted a calendar full of public events, and provided added security where it's greatly needed. The Bid has also been to a great extent responsible for the success of the historic park for all of Chinatown. And George Yu does this when no one is looking with no fanfare. He really cares. So it'd be a great loss to lose the Bid that has helped Chinatown grow and flourish. Thank you.
Thank you. Next caller.
Caller with the phone number ending in 1403, please press star six. Caller with the phone number ending in 1403, please press star six. Caller with the phone number ending in 7464, please press star six. Caller with the phone number ending in 7464, please press star six. Caller with the phone number ending in 0233, please press star six. Please state your name and speak on item number one.
Hi, my name is Jeff and I'm a new business owner in Chinatown and I wanted to speak in opposition of the renewal of the Bid. I think it's clear what we have is a corrupt, undemocratic organization that has outside control over the neighborhood and clearly doesn't have the best interest of those in the neighborhood that have the most need. And look at the track record with the Bid. I believe we have more businesses closing than opening. We have our two grocery stores in the neighborhood have closed, I believe, in the last year or two years. The Bid has not supported Chinatown businesses when they are in need most. The only thing they offer is basically a police force that's not accountable to anyone, especially the community that it interacts with the most. And, you know, I'm a new business in the neighborhood and I've seen so many other businesses close their doors because there's no supporting.
Thank you, Speaker.
Next caller.
Caller with the phone number ending in 8663, please press star six. Please state your name and speak on item number one.
Hello, my name's Phyllis Ling. I'm a resident and property owner in the area around Chinatown. I'm opposed to the establishment of the Chinatown Bid. I'd like to point out that the notice of public hearing to establish the Chinatown Bid provides an incorrect meeting ID. I called shortly after 10:00 AM, Zoom told me this meeting does not exist and I had to go online for instructions for the general city council agenda. I was listening to this meeting earlier on the phone. I got booted off when the first round of public comments closed. I called back and there was elevator music, so I hung up. The only reason I knew when to call in again was because I'm watching online also. The city council has already bent over backwards to establish this Bid. The city clerk's office is being instructed to directly bill the property owners rather than going through property tax rolls. This process is corrupt and for this, the Los Angeles Chinatown Business Council, the nonprofit that has been running the Bid, has not acted with any transparency or accountability. They violate the Brown Act, their agenda are only seven headings, 22 words total, every time the same. The city simply cannot approve a contract with this nonprofit to manage taxpayer funds. Taxpayers should not be forced to subsidize this unaccountable organizations.
Thank you.
Caller.
Next caller.
Caller with the phone number ending in 1676, please press star six. Please state your name and speak on item number one.
Hi, yeah, my name's Kevin. I'm with Sunrise Mill in LA. I'm calling again to oppose the Chinatown Bid for reasons people have stated already. Primarily, I wanted to speak on George Yu. You know, he's a bigot toward unhoused people, which is an anti-black stance. He is corrupt and he's been funding a bunch of U. City Council people's campaigns. He's had fundraisers for Huzar, who's now about to go to jail, council member Harris Dawson, and definitely council member Sadio, we did not forget about you. George Yu's been funding all your pockets, so we definitely shouldn't have the Bid. They prioritize gentrification. They are essentially an unaccountable, you know, taxpayer-funded extension of policing. And to want to extend policing in 2020 is unacceptable.
Thank you.
Needs and.
Next speaker.
Caller with the phone number ending in 5852, please press star six. State your name and speak on item number one.
Hi, my name is Shirley Zhang. I am a resident of Chinatown. I've lived here for over 10 years. I am calling to support the re-establishment of the Chinatown Bid. A lot of people have been speaking in opposition to our security patrols, the red shirts, and I just want to use this time to talk about all of the things that I personally know that the red shirts have done. From small things like returning lost property, we've returned countless wallets, countless persons. I personally had my driver's license of wallet returned to me by a red shirt. Stopped crimes in progress, both property crimes and violent crimes. Assisted LAPD with apprehending suspects and solving cases. We've located lost dogs, lost persons. And the red shirt is always the quickest and fastest to respond in the community, often arriving before LAPD to assist residents and merchants with security needs. Also, having the red shirts respond to homeless issues is much more compassionate than having LAPD respond. The red shirts work with social services like LASSA to help.
Technically.
Next speaker.
Caller with the phone number ending in 8776, please press star six. Please state your name and speak on item number one.
Hi, my name is Janice and I'm a Chinatown community member who's speaking out in opposition to the Bid. After countless hours of outreach and conversations with legacy small business owners, not the gentrifying ones who have previously spoken, and other community members, it's clear that the Bid only furthers the sadistic racist and classist interests of George Yu and causes great harm to folks who have been in Chinatown for multiple decades. The Bid claims that it helps community members feel more safe and secure. Why then have countless small business owners and employees expressed that the Bid security arrived late when there's an emergency in their store and they proceeded to tell these small business owners to call the cops instead because the Bid had no power to do anything about the emergency? Why is there photo and video evidence of Bid security roughly seizing elderly community members or even hitting community members with sticks? The Bid claims that it's improving Chinatown. For who? The white historians that see Chinatown as a weekend playground where they can wait for three hours to eat howling rays and then drive back to their silver-like condos? The Chinatown Committee has lost 33 small business owners since the Bid was instated 10 years ago and this trend is only continuing during the pandemic because the Bid has done nothing to support folks who have been essential to the fabric.
Caller with the phone number ending in 6017, please press star six. Please state your name and speak on item number one.
Hi, my name is Lorna. I'm speaking against the renewal of Chinatown Bid. The Chinatown Bid has been put in place to gentrify and generate profit off of low-income communities. Chinatown is a neighborhood that has one of the lowest median incomes in LA at $20,000 for the median income right now. Their community members consist of seniors and first-generation immigrants, but Bid's board consists of gallery owners and developers of large luxury apartments like Blossom Plaza, Jaw Apartments, and College Station Projects that are entirely unacceptable to the longstanding community and driving up rents and eviction rates for community members. Just this past year, Chinatown lost all three of its full-service grocery stores because of these rising rents and landlords that are directly tied to George Yu. On top of that, instead of supporting any remaining small businesses that were suffering during COVID-19, the Bid has been calling the City of Los Angeles to ticket remaining produce stalls in Chinatown, including Ulaan market, for putting stands on the market. As the owner of Far East Plaza, George Yu has made a name for himself for bringing in hip food eateries that are actively pushing out businesses serving the long-term community. He himself has claimed that he doesn't want any quote-unquote "old Chinese people" to rent any businesses in his plaza. A previous caller had mentioned.
Thank you. Next caller.
Call in user one, please press star six. Call in user one, please press star six. Caller with the phone number ending in 2990, please press star six. Please state your name and speak on item number one.
Hi, my name's Daphne Goxton. I'm a resident and homeowner in the Chinatown area. I wanted to speak in support of the Chinatown Bid. I think that, you know, they provide a really important service to the community with security, cleanup, graffiti removal. I think that a lot of the complaints are focused around one person on the Bid, but throwing out the entire organization because of issues with one person seems just not the way to deal with that. If there's problems within internal issues, those can be addressed, but getting rid of the Bid would be detrimental to our community if we lose out on important security cleanup events and things like that that are really important, especially being so close to jails, prisons, Skid Row, and having a lot of issues with crime and homelessness in the community. It would be really detrimental and would really affect the safety of both business owners and residents if we were to lose this Bid. So I really hope that you'll support the Bid, continue to allow it to exist, and, you know, if there's internal issues that need to be addressed, those can be handled separately.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next caller.
Caller with the phone number 3428, please press star six. Please state your name and speak on item number one.
Hi, my name is Tiffany Doe and I am here to oppose the re-establishment of the Bid. It's pretty useless, you know, like everyone has already given so much like feedback around how like more businesses have closed since Bid has been in existence, right? And not only that, though, like for people who don't know, it's incredibly corrupt. They don't do its job. They have sent, delayed sending out Board of Directors nominations to even renew themselves. They don't respond to public records requests. And in the one time that they did, it found out that George Yu, the head of the Bid, actually advocated for the death of houseless people. What you're doing is funding murderers, right? I think that's the big picture here. If you think that you're like, that is like, your property is more important than people's lives, you should really reconsider what it is you're doing and what you're advocating for because Bid is really just here to displace people, they are advocating to murder people, and they would really just like the local community to leave, which is why it's not okay for Bid to continue. Bid is incredibly corrupt. Again, they have always funded, the leader of it has funded the pockets of all the politicians sitting here and listening here. So there's no reason why Bid should be renewed at all. Again, for the small people who support it, like you, like you're just, you are not thinking of the bigger picture and of all the people who have been harmed and hurt by Bid. There has been so many already testimony around how much it has been hurtful to people and why aren't you listening to the harm that's been caused? Bid is racist and classist and it should not continue.
Okay, that concludes, speakers, on this item. Go ahead and prepare to vote on this item.
And Madam President, if I may.
Sure.
In regards to this item, the public hearing is now closed for item one, the Chinatown Business Improvement District. The tabulation of ballots shall take place in City Hall, room 223, immediately and will be publicly livestreamed. For directions to access the livestream, visit clerk.lacity.org/business-improvement-districts. The ballot tabulation results will be announced on Wednesday, September 30th.
Okay, thank you. Let's go ahead and prepare to vote on item number one. As amended, Madam Clerk.
Blumenfeld.
Please call the roll.
Blumenfeld, aye.
Bonin.
Bonin, aye.
Buscaino.
Aye.
Sadio.
Sadio, aye.
Harris Dawson.
Yes.
Corretz.
Aye.
Kerkorian.
Aye.
Lee.
Aye.
Martinez.
Aye.
O'Farrell.
Aye.
Price.
Aye.
Rodriguez.
Aye.
Rue.
Aye.
Wesson.
Wesson, aye.
Fourteen ayes, this item is adopted.
Okay, Madam Clerk, let's go ahead and move on to verbal motions. How many have been introduced?
The Clerk has two verbal motions to read into the record.
Okay, why don't you start with the first one?
The first motion was introduced by Councilmember Monica Rodriguez to be placed on the next regular council agenda. It is to resolve that 250,000 in the Lopez Canyon Landfill Community Amenities Trust Fund be transferred or appropriated to the Board of Public Works for supplemental services such as small litter cleanup in Council District 7. Is there a second?
Second.
Second.
Let's go ahead and move on to the next one.
Thank you. The final verbal motion was introduced by Councilmember Marquis Harris Dawson to be referred to the Transportation Committee. This resolution is authorizing the removal of the existing parking prohibition of vehicles that are in excess of 22 feet in length or seven feet in height during the hours of 2:00 AM and 6:00 AM on North Langet Avenue between South Avalon Boulevard and Imperial Highway. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Bonin. Okay, members, do you have any verbal motions? Ms. Rodriguez?
Thank you, Madam President. The moving clause is now I therefore be, now therefore be it resolved with the concurrence of the mayor that by the adoption of this resolution, the City of Los Angeles hereby includes in its 2019-2020 federal legislative program support for any administrative or legislative action which would prohibit forced hysterectomies at ICE detention facilities.
Sadio, second.
Mr. Sadio. Any others, Ms. Rodriguez?
That's it, thank you.
Mr. Corretz.
Thank you, Madam President. I move that, subject to the approval of the mayor, $120 be approved, excuse me, be appropriated from the Unappropriated Balance Fund Number 100-58 to the General Services Fund 100-40, account number 1070, salaries as needed for services in connection with Council District 5 for ovarian cancer awareness month at City Hall on September 30th, including the elimination of City Hall to increase awareness of ovarian cancer. And remember the lives lost to the disease and for more than 20,000 American women who are diagnosed with ovarian cancer each year. Early detection is critical. And this is presented by myself, Council President Nury Martinez, and Councilmember Monica Rodriguez.
I can confirm that. Madam Clerk, Ms. Rodriguez, can you confirm?
Confirmed.
Thanks. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Rue. Any others, Mr. Corretz?
Second one is on the Melrose Street banners. I therefore move that the City Council, in accordance with the Los Angeles Municipal Code, Section 62 dot 132, approve the street banner program being coordinated by the Melrose Business Improvement Association as the City of Los Angeles non-event street banner program. I further move that the Council approve the content of the street banner.
I further move that the Council approve the content of the street banner designs as attached.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Blumenfield. Any others, Mr. Corretz?
That's it, thank you.
All right, thank you, Mr. Buscaino.
Yes, thank you, Madam President and members. I move that the city attorney be requested to prepare and present an ordinance to harmonize L.A. Municipal Code sections associated with public officers with relevant state laws and legal authorities regarding identification for individuals employed as public officers by the city. And I believe Ms. Rodriguez will second this.
Second.
Second by Ms. Rodriguez. Any others, Mr. Buscaino?
That's it, Madam President, thank you.
Okay, Madam Clerk, that concludes verbal motions. What's before us?
Council has motions for posting and referral.
Posted and referred. Members, do we have any announcements? Mr. Sidio?
Madam President, thank you very much. It's Hispanic Heritage Month, and this Thursday Netflix will be premiering a documentary on Carlos Amorás. He is one of the original early Chicano artists, part of a group called Los Four. It's a, I've had the privilege of seeing a screening of this, and I think everybody will appreciate this. He has drawn and painted many, both murals and paintings, on the Echo Park area, Silverlake, East Los Angeles. Really a spectacular, spectacular artist, Carlos Amorás. This Thursday, Netflix documentary made by Richard Montoya of Culture Clash fame, that will be premiered this Thursday, Hispanic Heritage Month, Netflix. I encourage everyone in our audience and the council to see this great film. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sidio. Mr. Buscaino, do you have an announcement?
Yes, I do. As we know, members, we could have been planning an officer funeral today, but we're not. Thanks, thank God to the heroic efforts here in Harbor's Police Station. I want to thank members of the community, including a member of our colleagues, Ms. Martinez, our council president, I know we were on the phone late Saturday night. Ms. Rodriguez, thank you for your text, and of course, the mayor. Just yet another example of how dangerous police work is today. By the grace of God, our desk officer here at Harbor Station survived, and he's at home resting comfortably with his family. So again, thanks to our harbor area community for thoughts and prayers for our desk officer, and to the other officers. One suffered a broken arm, and to the watch commander, her heroic efforts, just incredible. And that video that just came out yesterday, so just want to reach out to the entire city for their prayers for our officers here at Harbor Station.
Thank you, Mr. Buscaino, and thank you for your due diligence in being out there so late at night. So I appreciate all your efforts in keeping us all updated, so I certainly appreciate that. Mr. Sidio, do you have any other announcements?
I do not.
Okay, thank you. Any adjourned motions, members?
Madam President?
Hold on, who's speaking?
Kirkorian.
Oh, Mr. Kirkorian, go ahead.
Thank you very much, Madam President, and I beg your indulgence, I have a couple of things that I need to say today, members. The Republic of Artsakh is a small democratic republic about the size of the state of Connecticut. And this city, the City of Los Angeles, has had a long tradition of supporting and uplifting the people of the Republic of Artsakh. Ten years ago, we hosted the president of the country in City Hall. A few years ago, we established a friendship-city relationship with the town of Shushi in Artsakh. And in 2014, this city became one of the first cities in the country to formally recognize the sovereignty and independence of the Republic of Artsakh. The republic was born in the breakup of the Soviet Union, when the brave people of this region stood up to Soviet forces and declared their independence and declared their sovereignty and decided to form a democratic state. And that led to a fierce and bloody war when the Soviet state of Azerbaijan tried to impose Stalin-era boundaries and crush that movement of sovereignty and independence. Well, the Azeris lost that war. It cost tens of thousands of lives. It resulted in the displacement of a half a million people. But the result of it was, just like the result of our own revolutionary war, was a free and independent state devoted to democratic values. And I'm sorry to say that as we meet today, that state is under attack. The Republic of Artsakh was invaded on Sunday by Azerbaijan's military forces, which has already resulted in countless civilian deaths and a gross breach of the ceasefire that's existed for the last 30 years, as this country has continued to flourish and grow and build its independence and its commitment to democracy. Now, why does this matter to us? It matters, first of all, because the United States has a strong interest in stability in a region that includes Iran, Turkey, and Russia. It matters to us because the City of Los Angeles and the United States of America cares about democratic values that are represented in the Republic of Artsakh more than it does values of corruption and autocracy that are represented by the Republic of Azerbaijan that has invaded Artsakh. And it matters to us because this war presents a very real risk of the continuation of the genocide of Armenians. This country has committed itself to the destruction of Armenians and the destruction of Armenian culture and the destruction of the state of Artsakh. And it's exceptionally important that all Americans learn about this conflict right now, learn about this gross violation of the human rights of the people of Artsakh by Azerbaijan, and contact members of Congress to demand that the United States engage to bring peace to this region. I have been to Artsakh many times. Mr. Blumenfield has visited Artsakh. I know other members have strong and close affinity with the Republic of Artsakh. I ask that each of you act today. Call upon your members of Congress to ensure that this invasion of this sovereign, peaceful, peace-loving country is brought to a prompt close, and Azerbaijan is held to account for this outrage. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Mr. Kirkorian. Mr. O'Farrell?
Thank you, Madam President. Just, no one speaks more eloquently or more forcefully or more powerfully about this conflict than Mr. Kirkorian, and I just want to add to his mission to make sure that the world knows about Turkey and Azerbaijan's aggression in the Artsakh region. And just to say that genocide denial has a consequence. It leads to this psychological justification to perpetuate acts of hatred and violence, and that's exactly what this latest aggression is all about. And unfortunately, and this is where everyone's voice can be heard, and the reason why everyone's voice needs to be heard is that there is a vacuum in leadership right now between Russia, France, and the United States with all of these other distractions, and the fact that the world's most powerful leaders are distracted by all of these other issues really is one of the ingredients here, and there needs to be an immediate ceasefire. We need to absolutely stand with the Republic of Artsakh and the Armenian community as never before and speak with one voice to deescalate these tensions, and we need to come together as a world peace-loving, democracy-loving people and stand up on behalf of the Armenian community in Artsakh, who are being victimized, and literally civilian deaths in the many dozens already in the last couple of days of aggressions. And so with that, I just want to back and support the remarks of Mr. Kirkorian. Thank you.
Madam President?
Yes, Mr. Wesson?
If I might, I would like to ask all of the members to help me by distributing a post on your social media about a missing young man from our community. His name is Juan Carlos Hernandez. He was last seen September 22nd, as he was leaving work at around the 3200 block of Adams Boulevard. His vehicle, or his mother's vehicle, was found on 64th and Figueroa. I have been in communication with the mom, and of course, she is in pain that I cannot even comprehend nor can I describe. But what she asked me to do was to see if I could get all of you to post his photo, his name. He was a young, he's a young, 21-year-old, good kid described by the family. And so I will make sure that my office sends to each and every one of your offices what we've sent out on young Mr. Hernandez. And so I'm just asking on behalf of the mom for a personal favor, if anyone has information, they should immediately contact LAPD. Thank you, Madam President, for giving me a moment.
Thank you, Mr. Wesson, absolutely. We're just forward to see information, we're happy to do that. I can't even imagine what this poor mother's going through, but thank you for that. Mr. Corretz?
Thank you, Madam President, and thank you, Mr. Kirkorian, for bringing this issue to the fore immediately, and Mr. O'Farrell for your comments as well. We know that the Armenian genocide has been denied for over 100 years, and I think it just makes it that much easier for other genocides, and especially a genocide against Armenians, to take place again. We've seen a number of civilians that have died in this fledgling conflict, but I think we see what's coming, we know what's coming if the world does not help to pressure and intervene, and it absolutely has to happen. Otherwise, we could easily see a second genocide. I don't expect necessarily to see federal leadership, as was noted, quite distracted in the next month or so, but we definitely need to see our congressional and senatorial delegations speak up with one voice to push to see this conflict nipped in the bud before it gets any further. So I certainly agree, I encourage all our members to contact their members of Congress and other friends in Congress to push them to make statements and to push the government to work towards putting an immediate halt to this conflict.
Thank you, Mr. Corretz. Mr. Sidio, announcements?
I just wanted to thank Herb Wesson for his prompt response. I've been working with Christine Flores on the loss of this young man. It's inexplicable. Juan Carlos Hernandez is a really good kid, and it's inexplicable, and you can imagine the trauma and the pain that this is causing his family at this moment. And so I encourage all of us to participate and do and think about all the things that we can to help find this young man. I thank you.
Thank you, members, thank you, Gilbert.
Thank you.
Ms. Rodriguez?
Thank you, Ms. Martinez. I just, I wanted to lend my voice and just thank Mr. Kirkorian for his really eloquent remarks in capturing the spirit of this moment and what it calls on all of us to do at this moment in time. You know, this is a community that has unfortunately known far too many tragedies. In fact, most recently, there was, you know, large populations of the Armenian community were impacted by the devastation in Lebanon. And so now, at the hands, you know, again, of this tyrannical behavior and just this active aggression is one that causes greater harm for those living abroad and those here in the States and here in our community. So thank you, Mr. Kirkorian, and I think it definitely is deserving of a collective effort for all of us to contact our members of Congress and urge, you know, their support and their intervention. And we, in spite of some of, in spite of the leadership, our voices still matter, and I think it's important for us to rise up and use these voices in moments just like this. So thank you, Mr. Kirkorian, thank you, Mr. O'Farrell and Corretz.
Thank you, Mr. Blumenfield, announcements?
Just quickly wanted to add my voice, you know, I went with Mr. Kirkorian to the region, to Armenia, and we went to the area right where the fighting is happening in Artsakh, and just wanted to express my sympathy and major concern as well, I mean, for the people there, but also, this is one of those incidents that really could blow up and bring in, you know, if Turkey overreacts and Russia, I mean, it has grave consequences that could impact the entire world. So I just join in not only hoping and praying that it ends soon, but in taking action in terms of contacting our congress members, because it's quite serious. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Rue?
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you, Councilmember Kirkorian. I just want to just add to the concerns, and I just really want to thank Councilman Paul Kirkorian for educating us and always keeping us informed of issues with Artsakh. I learned so much from him about this, and this has no place in this time, and I echo the concern that all of my other colleagues have, and if there's anything we could do to support Artsakh or the Armenian-American community here in Los Angeles, please call on us, because we are all in support. Thank you.
Thank you. Let's move on to adjourned motions. Are there any adjourned motions? Mr. Buscaino?
Thank you, Madam President, I have two. First, I'd like to adjourn in memory of Gloria Sencillo Dumas, passed away peacefully at her home on Thursday, September 3rd. Gloria was born in Los Angeles on January 7th, 1928, as a daughter of Jesus Injulza and Sofia Argos, both of Sinaloa, Mexico, grew up with two brothers, Gilbert and Alex. Gloria was married to Pierre Felix Dumas for 62 years, the love of her life. Gloria was a graduate of Bishop Conti High School, Our Lady of Loretto in Los Angeles in 1946. From 1947 to 1948, Gloria attended Woodbury Business College, majoring in journalism, and worked at Eastman Kodak as an office administrator. She was active in the Las Dumitas Girls Club in Los Angeles for over nine years. From 1950 to 1957, Gloria worked as California newspaper publishers, and in 1957 was wed to Pierre Dumas. She was a passionate gardener. Her son, Robert, tells me, traveled throughout Europe and was active in the San Pedro community as a member of the Assistance League and Little Sisters of the Poor, an active member also at our local Holy Trinity Parish for over 47 years. She is survived by her children Renee and Marquita Dumas, Gabrielle and Gary McFarland, Sophie and John Pearson, and Robert and Maria Dumas, her 10 grandchildren and five great-grandchildren. her 10 grandchildren and five great-grandchildren. I'll never forget, last, last year, we celebrated Dia de los Muertos in downtown San Pedro, and she was, just really embraced her culture, her family, her faith. She will truly be missed here in the San Pedro community. The family asks, in lieu of flowers, donation to be made to the Little Sisters of the Poor in San Pedro. She will deeply be missed but remembered forever in our hearts. May she rest in peace. And secondly, true neighborhood champion for CD15, Betty Hawkins, passed away peacefully on September 8th at 84 years old. She was born December 10th, 1935. She attended the National School of Business in Memphis, Tennessee, Southwest Junior College, and later she received her Bachelor's in Business Administration from Redlands University. She worked for the Long Beach Job Corps as a case manager and enjoyed working with youth to get them onto a productive career path. She then worked as an electrical assembler at McDonnell Douglas, which later became Boeing. She worked with Boeing until she retired. She was a lifetime member of Local 148 United Aerospace Workers Union. And one of her passions was giving back to the community where she resided, particularly in the Harbor Gateway North Neighborhood Council, a member of Neighborhood Watch. She held various positions, including Treasurer for District 4 Representative, and she was also an LAPD Community Police Advisory Board Member for Southeast Division. A tremendous loss for our Harbor Gateway community. She will truly be missed by many. May she rest in peace. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Buscano. Mr. O'Farrell?
Thank you, Madam President. Along the same lines as Mr. Buscano with his adjourning motion, I'd like to adjourn council today in the name and memory of someone else very, very involved in his community of Silver Lake, and that is Yannis Purenz, who passed away at age 71, a longtime Silver Lake resident and tireless advocate for transparency in local government and the preservation of Silver Lake's environmental and cultural diversity. Mr. Purenz died early Monday of last week, September 21st, following a short fight with pancreatic cancer. Born in Germany, Yannis moved to the States with his parents as a child. He graduated from Point Park College in Pittsburgh, Pennsylvania, worked as a stage actor and a director, recently retired after many years as Director of California Operations at Reed Smith LLP. He was a lover of and benefactor to the performing arts, which was his first love. After a successful career, Yannis devoted his talents to his passions, performing arts and helping his community. He was appointed Region 7 Representative to the Silver Lake Neighborhood Council in 2018 and re-elected in 2019, but subsequently resigned and focused on his work with the Silver Lake Wildlife Sanctuary, the Silver Lake History Collective, and Silver Lake Together. He also served as co-chair of the Reservoir Committee and represented the sanctuary on the Silver Lake Reservoir Complex, Master Plan Stakeholder Working Group. And the Silver Lake Master Plan Reservoir has been ongoing for the last few years and is wrapping up soon. And so we're very appreciative of Yannis's contributions to that. He will be remembered as a kind, socially conscious man of integrity and fine intellect, who was a true and stalwart friend of many personally and within the community and beyond. Yannis was husband to the pre-deceased playwright and artistic director, Tom Thomas, and brother to the pre-deceased artist, Gertz Purenz. He is survived by his brother, Vladys Purenz, his sister-in-law, Linda Purenz, and Daiga Purenz, his niece, Indra, and his dedicated and loving friends from New York to Pittsburgh to Los Angeles and points in between. The memorial service for Yannis is in the planning stages, and feel free to contact our office if you need that information relayed to you once it makes it our way. May Yannis Purenz rest in peace.
Mr. O'Farrell, can I sign on to that, German, please?
Absolutely. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. O'Farrell. Mr. Corretz?
Thank you, Madam President. Today, I'd like to adjourn in memory of V.C. Powell, who passed away on September 16th. V.C. was an esteemed mentor, career counselor, facilitator, and adjunct faculty member at the UCLA Luskin School of Public Affairs. But she was more than her titles and her official role. She was a special person who cared about students and connecting them to experiences to help them reach their career goals. It was always a pleasure hosting UCLA Luskin Day with her every year at City Hall, helping students get excited about civic engagement and local government. She was born in LA on October 5th, 1953, and was a longtime resident of Culver City. She received her BA and MBA from UCLA. And she worked for the UCLA Alumni Association from 1990 to 1997. She then joined the school that would eventually become the Luskin School of Public Affairs. She served in a variety of roles in the school over the years, including Director of Alumni and Government Relations. She oversaw counseling internships and fellowships at the school. And she was the principal partner with UCLA Government and Community Relations in the annual Luskin School of Public Affairs Day at City Hall, during which UCLA Luskin graduate students visited with the mayor and council members and department heads of the City of Los Angeles. She was instrumental in developing deep ties between the school and civic leaders. And her contributions were many, but her success with the Luskin Senior Fellows Program, which brought civic leaders into UCLA, was her signature accomplishment. She was also an adjunct faculty member